Mr. President, I move to the board for June 24th.
Say.
Motion made and seconded. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
What agenda?
Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Your yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have no board member reports tonight. Next, we have the code of conduct information.
Thank you, Board President. Thank you, Board members. Are there any questions about the code of conduct or would you just simply just share the things that were added or changed?
That would be those suggestions.
All right. So, her face. From our last board reading, we had the discipline committee come and share some of the changes and some of the suggestions for changes and field additions. And if you have a copy of it on page 29, these are the things that were added. On page 29, you'll find the discipline notice. And on the end of that page, you'll see that we level the different types of offenses and what type of consequences you draw on. So, for level one, two, three, four, and five, as well as separating from elementary and senior year. So, this is a one-two setup that was made. Another addition is the on page 31. On page 31, you will find that and following pages where we go through each type of offense that the department in our district identified what level we can hit the offense with all under. And so administrators, parents, and students will be able to use this matrix to identify what type of consequence could go along with the title of the offense. And so at least for some of the additions to this. Finally, and this is probably one of the most exciting pieces that we've added, occur on pages 41 through 5. This is centered around the re-engagement process. And this title actually has everything to do with becoming more restorative in how we work with families and students. On page 41, we have just a overview of the process. And through this, you'll be able to identify what we were asking from all participants, who needs to be a part of the re-engagement process. Who else we may invite outside of the parent, the student, interpreter if needed, and the administrator. We also have identified the goals for the re-engagement. And I think that's very important. So, parents and students and elders will know again what our purpose is for the re-engagement. As you go on, we also wanted to share on page 43. This is the re-engagement plan. This is what administrators will help walk our families and students through as they identify what is the best way to come back into the school, what type of supports those students might need, what, who is that trusted adult that needs to be connected with that student? And so this is a part of the process. And finally, and this is a really great sheet, when our students are suspended and before they come back, we ask the student or the parent to walk through the student reflection sheet, which is found on page 55. So, we want our students to kind of think through their actions to come up with some solutions of how to rectify the harm and what are some steps you need to take from there? So, these are, those are the things that were added. All right? So, I now would like to take you through what was changed. So, the first changes we put in were found on the introduction. And the introduction is actually found on page one. We, we made sure that we changed the expectation until you see there's expectations for what we want for the students as well as for parents. Our introduction really laid out at the beginning what the district is going to do, but we thought it would be important to also add what our expectations would be for students and parents. Now, we can kind of get into the policy pieces, and this is found on page 23 and 24. Policy JG and JGK. And the only change that we put in for those two policies is that we removed the school resource officer and changed it to school safety officer, since we're not dealing with actual PD. So, that was the change forth in that policy. For policy JGD, this has to do with the conference that, and it's on page 26. It has to do with the conference that the administrators were supposed to have when students would return. It was, it was called a remedial conference in the old code of conduct. We, we stopped using remedial conference, and we had been using this previous year, re-entry conference. Now, we're changing it to the re-engagement conference. And with page 40 or 55 of that process. The next, the next change also, we added the re-engagement language to page to JGR1. So, it's just the language changes that, that are a part of the policy. Finally, when we go to look specifically at different offenses, we removed in JGR1 assault that assault is there, but we removed the degrees of assault. That's not something that we determine as a district. So, we removed that degree of assault. We also removed from JGR1 the word pager. We combined disrespectful, disrespectful and disruptive conduct or speech and conduct and speeches combined. And finally, with, we added to fighting inside and a fight and contributing to a disruptive situation. Those little shooting pieces that were missing. When we talked about that the last time we met, that sometimes there are many things that lead up to, to a fight that we needed to address early and we needed to be a part of. So, these were the suggested changes for the code of conduct and additions. Are there any questions about this?
No, thank you very much.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I know we are, I just want to thank Jessica and those who participated in the work around changing our discipline code to a code of conduct. A heavy lift, but it still keeps a level of accountability for all involved and remembering that dealing with student misbehavior is a collaborative approach between the school district and our families. And as she talked about the re-engagement, it's truly about making sure our environments for our classroom, whether it's in the cafeteria on the bus, that students are so thank you, Ms. Bassett, for your work.
Dr. Penelope?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has there been any definition to disruptive speech and behavior?
So, we have worked on that. Actually, that was one of the areas where we didn't get stuck, but we tried to make sure that there was clarity in it because it is so wide open. Jessica, did you find? So, to answer your question, yes, Ms. Bassett is pulling it up now.
The way that we had to define our account is that any verbal or written, editorial, electronic, or symbolic language or gestures that directed at any person in violation of district policy, they're ruled over or defiant, considered inappropriate in an education setting materially, essentially dislossen for classroom connectivity or that jeopardizes personal safety of others or otherwise ruled over, defiant, or considered inappropriate in educational settings. Students will not be different from speech in situations which are protected by law. So, that's the way we define it in. So, one of the things that was important about our conversation around that is that it could fall to something that would not be, would lead to suspension. So, if you look at how it's labeled in the matrix, it could be a level one, level two, level three, really would have to do with the type of language and if it was offensive, then it would take something to, something higher that would lead to suspension. But it could fall anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. The next item on the superintendent's report is, we will have Glenn Tarvin provide that information. Glenn Tarvin, thank you for being here this evening. And I just want to publicly say thank you for your leadership in the work surrounding our summer enrichment or our summer school. And thank you for providing weekly updates so that they're all informed of the work that's happening with our children.
Thank you. President Burton, Dr. Martin Knox, through the board, thank you for letting me speak to you. We are in the process of collecting the survey. We surveyed our third through 12th grade students, parents, and staff. So far, we've received more than 20% more from all three surveys than we did last year. So, we have lots of data to collate. When we get all of that data crunched, we will send a report to you all so you have that information. The biggest things that we heard, 74% of parents said they would sign students up for summer school or summer enrichment and guarantee the teacher. When parents and students were asked about their favorite part, parents' number one response was their students being with friends. That was 29%. And field trips and assemblies was 25%. Students' number one response to field trips is 46%. Our attendance overall for summer school was 80% for those who persisted to day 220. So, we had 2,900 students enrolled on the last day. We started about 3,400. One of the things that we are still going to do is survey parents about why did your students not finish? And get some of those reasons to understand why did you enroll them, but they did not have them persist? We are also going to survey parents who had their students attend in 23, but not in 24. And see, get some information from that so that it can affect our programs as well. Because we're still crunching that data. They don't have more to give to you, but like I said, I'll be pushing that information out to you all. Any questions?
I'd like to add something to the report as well, and I'm not sure if many people understand the impact of some of the additions that we've added to enrichment. Can you talk about the construction in them? So, that.
One of the pieces that we did add this year was the girls in healthcare and, no, girls in construction and boys in healthcare courses. Those were a 10-day class open to freshmen and sophomores mostly to try to build interest in understanding what opportunities were available to students at Herndon. Preliminary, I've heard some really good things about it. And kids had some experiences to know about some careers they might have interested in that they didn't know about before. Students earned a half credit, high school credit for those 10 days. So, it was a good way for those students to dabble in some things at Herndon. The girls' class was held at Herndon, the boys' class was held at Raytown High School. We had, I think I mentioned last month, we had a lifeline helicopter come from the healthcare class. We had a really good partner working with the construction class. So, it was a really good opportunity. We did hear some feedback that maybe those kids who were eighth graders the day before might not quite be ready. So, I think Dr. Baker wants to repackage that programming a little bit for next year, but this was a good first start for us to do some career exploration in summer school for those students.
What course was where the product was right?
I'm sure that was the boys in healthcare class. And he was just giving them exposures to several different first responder type experiences.
What age was that?
High school, I believe.
High school.
Anything else? Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. And 8.3 bond update, Mr. Hughes, please.
Good evening, Matt. Dr. Burton, Sergeant, President Sergeant, Dr. Martin Knox, back to the floor. We are recognizing both projects. We are working on ready and cutting ceremony for coming up soon for the volatility gym every time I school. Everything's going to finish the final layer of asphalt today. And we continue finishing touches up on that. South High, you'll see we're digging tunnels and doing some other things there. Both projects are tracking on budget and also tracking to finish it on time. We will see all that. We did start the demo of the existing PAC. So, that is, is the site to be seen if you want to drive by and look at that to see that it's finally made a set. We'll start with that one is set to, we're still too early to know exactly what will be done. The PAC existing, the new PAC, excuse me, will be done in the center of the year.
That includes the superintendent's report.
Thanks for having our presentations and recognition.
Good evening, President Burton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. This evening, we are recognizing our transportation department for our Raytown for being safe and smiling. Thanks for our students when they get on top of us every day. And we also want to commend them for receiving a 90% promise of Missouri Highway Patrol inspection for the fifth year in a row. Video, a little more about our wonderful transportation partner.
We have a very important job. We take about 4,500 kids to school every day with 40 bus drivers. There's a lot of planning that goes into that. It's important for our community that we have a safe, reliable transportation for students to get to and from school. Last year, we did almost 2,000 field trips.
Well, I started here in 2020, but I've been driving a school bus since 2016.
I really love my job. You get to know Raytown in general. The kids are lovely. Myself, I've been here for what, seven years? And I had a chance to go to the 2024 class graduation, and I didn't realize how many kids that I drove, I touched. And they was like, thank you, bus driver. And that right there, that's just like, okay, I guess, you know, it's not as bad as people think. And that right there just brings more hope than you could possibly ever think of as a bus driver.
I love it that it's different every day. I get to work with a great group of people. We have great bus aides and bus drivers and mechanics and routers. It's a really great team to work with every day, and every day is a little different.
I just think we all work good together. I get along with everybody. There's not, not one person here that I do not like. So, it's, yeah, I'm un-blessed.
The people that we work with, it's just like a big old family. The kids on the bus, if they have problems, you can help them through them. It's a different situation every single day. We always say good morning to them when they get on the bus, and we always tell them good afternoon or have a good evening or weekend when they get off the bus. So, you know, they feel important because that's very important for them to feel, you know, liked and loved even when they go to school.
We can teach somebody how to drive, but being caring and kind is hard to teach. I think it's awesome that the district is lifting up transportation and highlighting the work that we do every day. They're the first face the kids see every day, coming in and the last face they see headed home.
And it just warms my heart because it lets you know that even though they're young-minded, they still have time to mature. And as a bus driver, watching your students mature, that's like the greatest thing ever. It really is.
Some aren't in a good mood sometimes, so just when they see my, my face, maybe they'll be in a good mood, you know?
It's just an amazing feeling to know that you can put some type of perspective on their lives, make them have a better day, put a smile on their face before they walk off this bus.
Because my thing is you never know what these kids are going through. And just that simple, good morning, how you been, how you doing? And just by asking them simple questions, it gives them hope that somebody care.
The school district is a reliable place to come to work. We have pretty set schedules. I think it works great for people with young families. I've got people who retired, and this is sort of their second career. They can get a lot of satisfaction and enjoyment in knowing that the job they do every day is so important to our students and families.
I really recommend having a job here. I just love it.
I'd like to tell all my staff thank you. You know, I hope they know that I care about them. I hope they know how much me and all the rest of the district and the team appreciate everything they do.
This is also going to be our new recruiting video for bus drivers.
I'll put that in really quickly on the heels before he runs out the door. But you know, I have, I usually say other duties that are assigned and as a leader, you're supposed to roll up your sleeves and do the thing. And I did the other day. So, I would say that only transportation has been the only department that has had me out in 100-degree weather. Skirt packing out cold.
I appreciate the help. The bus drivers appreciate it too. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Right, there is no public, anybody signed up for public service, so we will have that item. Four committee reports. Finance, no report. Policy review committee. Goodbye.
No, no report.
No report for capital.
We're meeting, we're meeting tonight.
Okay. Meeting tonight for policy review committee. Community engagement committee, their reviews will be meaning something. Next meeting, September 9th. Curriculum, professional development committee. Meeting in September, safety committee.
No meeting.
Citizens advisory committee.
No meeting.
Their motion.
Mr. President, I move forward to approve the June 2024 curriculum and instruction committee meeting. And the June, November 2024 board policy review committee meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Next, we have full management and swim lessons services.
Mr. President. Member of our education group, white family RP for the wellness center in amount of $247,534.77 for the one that represents this last school year. So, also options for a new for 2556 and 2627 schools.
Motion made and seconded. Seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Welcome back. We have swimming, swimming and wellness center. Mr. President, checking out.
Member of our education group, about the timing for our time system to the amount of $25,730.
Second. Motion made and seconded.
President, your vice president, Dr. Knox, board. I was just going to step forward to ask answering questions you had about this purchase.
Oh, Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Yeah, these are the ones we searched earlier. He just had some money. A little bit going without, we decided to purchase it all. I'll give his 25.
Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Kenny Benzo, foster, care, and business. More than full contract for the care services of foster drop at presenting. Second. Motion made and seconded.
And I'm sure we have that answering questions.
Oh, is this McKenna, is this, Ms. Boyston?
I don't believe so, but I'm not positive. I just took this over from Michelle Eagle, so I'm still beginning to know the new names. This is a new vendor for us. One of our other vendors is not providing good service, so we need to add another vendor. We are required to provide caving for any of our students qualified when we came into who live out of district. And we also provide some caving for foster students who live out of district. So, that's the reason we have a vendor. But I'm not sure who are contacted. Need to for this. Okay.
So, how many vendors do we have?
Three. We have two that have originals tonight, and I'll be working to target easily to bring another people. So this is a per ride contract, so we are not charged anything until we assign the rights to them.
Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Mr. President, again, is this?
Exactly. So there, there is a cost sheet in the contract. Uh, but it is a per ride cost. So we are quoted the cost per ride as we put them requested. And there's a flat rate and then there's mileage. Um, it depends on if there's a single student, multiple students. That goes to multiple tiers of, of schools. Um, so it's kind of complex. Um, but we ensure and we may act on everybody to ensure that we are charged correctly.
And this will get, this will get any event though. Also Kevin vendors also homeless students.
Yes. So we can't into this law that provides services for our students. So assist is a vendor that we've had and we just need to review their contract. Um, hopscotch drive is a new vendor for us and then our third vendor is Everdriven. Last year was down. Last year we spent about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The year before we spent over a million. Um, it is very, very costly. So we do whatever we can to ensure that our billing is correct. That's why we audit every single ride. We also encourage parents who have the opportunity to transport for themselves. We provide them the option of parent reimbursement. And so that helps their pocket, but also save the customer.
So we know, uh, what it might cost this year.
It totally depends on the number of students who need rides, how far the rides are. We. No, no. We, we have some students who have as far away as Liberty. Um, KCK. So those rides that are on distance, we spend a lot of their mileage.
Even if we, um, did enrollment, it fluctuates. It depends on a student's homeless status.
Yes.
So we can start off with ones that have numbers and add the good progress.
I'm just wondering how we budget that I.
It, it is a challenge that we talk with Jackie Burnett and try to be as accurate as we can, but, but it is a struggle. Absolutely.
Mr. President, uh, so with the Everdriven, have they made any updates or changes in terms of? Drivers that are in no show versus students, you know, no shows. Um, I understand that just from leaving and know that there have been some issues with that.
So we have been in talks with them. Uh, one of the things with Everdriving is that we have asked them to extend the time, especially at high school. They were only giving students two minutes to get into a cab and that's not. So that is a change that we have required of them to continue to serve our students.
And then as far as showing up earlier and way ahead of time, uh, sometimes they're probably with them lodging that time against students as well.
So that is something I wasn't aware of and I moved into, um. We are paying, we are paying by ride, not necessarily by time. So that isn't something I've anywhere, but I, I am aware that we have some rights missed because they left too early. Any other questions?
Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Thank you. Post is made seconded. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Good.
Great to be here. Uh, if, uh, we can, we'd just like to take a couple of fast moments and talk to you a little bit about the document you happen to find. Um, like Dr. Harvin just said, he was presenting something to you that a week ago was someone else's job. So, uh, of course, you know, we as your director of curriculum instruction and as of first of July, we can have assessment on there. So I'm coming to you with the assessment plan, uh, because we're still covering, uh, musical retirement. I'm pleased to have my colleague here with me.
Hi, I'm here to more. I will be taking over as the district assessment.
Uh, so just very briefly, I'll talk to you a little bit about the plan that's in front of you. This is a document that gets to be every summer. Um, the board reviews and includes the assessment plan. Of course, this is covering, um, a wide range of our systems of assessment. We know that we, when we teach, we must also assess product and we assess in a couple of different ways. So one of the types of assessments you'll see here is diagnostic type of assessment. We're looking for something very specific perhaps. Uh, we're doing thousands of screeners or we're suspecting a disability. We're doing some, some very specific testing to get information on particular students. You'll also notice that you see in here summative assessments. So summative assessments happen at the end of a chunk of learning. A lot of times. Uh, those are the classic tests that you might think of from your high school days. So you do a chapter, you do a unit of instruction. After a few weeks, your teacher gives you a very big test. Uh, and maybe contrary to popular belief among students, we don't try to test, test, test. Sometimes it feels like that. You'll also see a third type of test in here, which is a formative assessment and those are more checkpoints along the way. That really help teachers make decisions as they're continuing to teach that uniform instruction. So the summative comes at the end, the formative's happening at the beginning and during the test. So we teach a little bit, you give maybe a small assessment, quiz, um, or a check-in, check for understanding. And then based on what the students tell us, how well they do, we make adjustments in our instruction. And you need all of those pieces to have what we call comprehensive systematic assessment. Uh, lots of ways to get information from, from students for many different purposes, naturally with this document. Um, so I'm gonna have Ms. Moore, um, walking through a couple of just highlights of this document and of course, we're happy to hear any questions.
Thank you so much for having me. Um, like I said, Mr. Britt, that I'm going to just kind of walk you through. So if you turn to page five. This starts our preschool, early learning. Um, as you can see, we offer a variety of screeners. For our young kids cognitive fine motor, gross motor, social emotional development, um, for them. And we also for the down the page, the DRDP, we assess major learning and progress of these students that we have. So this starts to the end and see how they progress through their early childhood education programs. And then if you turn to page nine, that starts our elementary, uh, assessment plan. You can see that we do continue our vision, hearing and health screenings to all of our students. Um, kindergarten specifically, we have what's called the kindergarten, kindergarten observation board. This is a summative assessment that we give all, to all of our incoming kindergartners to determine their readiness for kindergarten. All of our, um, kindergarten teachers do this assessment. They collect the data and then we turn that information over to DESI. And then also we, this is where we're gonna start the NWEA. We do this page through eleven. Throughout their time in the Raycon School District. This is our third year that we use this screener. So we use it for reading fluency and also math growth. And so, um, this is how we screen our students and then monitor their progress throughout their education in the Raycon District. And then if you would flip to page fourteen for me, please. This continues elementary, but this is grade three through five. And then the major addition to grade three through five is our Missouri assessment plan or math. Those students, uh, will start the grade level assessment plan. So three, uh, sorry, grade level assessment. They will take English and math grade through five and then our fifth graders also take science. So this is the big end of like school year test, um, for the state that we give all of our students. And then to page eighteen, this is where we'll start our secondary. So grades six through eight also take the GLA of the grade level assessment. Six and eight test math and English, the eighth graders also add that science piece to it. Our ninth through twelve graders, we take, they took what's called the EOC or the end of force exam. So that would be algebra one, algebra two, biology, government and English two. So that's how we measure. Uh, at our secondary level. And then if you turn to page nineteen, you can see that we continue our NWEA growth reading and growth math. Um, so that we have a really good company to profile of our kids as they, uh, go throughout their schooling. And then also you'll notice that we offer a lot of CCR college and career readiness tests to our students. So the first one, the industry recognized credentials or IRC, those are the great assessments and great things that we give in our permanent, um, career center. So there's something that kids can take with them when they leave our permanent career rather than they're ready for their, um, job or their industry. We also allow all of our seniors to choose and our juniors to choose which CCR test they want to take. So we offer the ACT, which is targeted for students that want to participate in a four-year college after high school. We also offer the AppiPlacer and that is for students that are needing more force community college and it's more of a placement test. So that students know what classes to take. Um, on page twenty, also go through to our ACT work keys. This is the test that we give to our students that give them, um, information on their functional skills that are going to be required for work. And then our ASVAB and those are the, that's the test that we give to any students that interested in engineering one of the armed forces. Do you have any questions for us? Also on the last page, page thirty, you can kind of see just a very basic overview or calendar. Of those test dates and test windows, um, for all of those very exciting tests that.
President, with the, uh, testing for, how do we determine, I know in kindergarten, kindergarten, the, uh, the, the testing where they have to, the, the students when it comes to special needs, the other. Teachers able to request or the parents as they're coming, it's a, it's a conversations like that and it comes to other assessment.
Yeah. So, um, incoming students, um, look, they're coming to kindergarten with no prior schooling experience, like maybe they didn't come to us in preschool. Um, a lot of times we need time with the students, right? So depending on what their background is, if they've been in some type of daycare program or preschool program. Uh, some other structure versus I was at home with grandma. School is a very different experience based on, uh, you know, kindergarten. Kindergartners readiness level. So we typically take quite a bit of time that kindergarten year to really give them, um, supports. And get them acclimated to make sure that they are understanding what school is and how to do school. We instituted some additional supports last year, like transitional kindergarten program. Um, the bottom line is a parent, of course, can always come in and say, hey, I, I suspect, uh, my child may have, uh, something going on. Um, what do you guys think? Or can you, can you look into that? We make a school-based determination then, um, as a school team as to whether or not we're ready to pursue the testing. Uh, we do lots of things that happen before we evaluate a student for special education or special services. So certainly we always have to open the parents, want that input, seek that input. Oftentimes if the parent has a concern. The school team is mirroring that concern. We're on the same page. Um, but particularly for our youngest learners, we want to give them as much runway as possible to take off in that tier one regular setting with supports. Before we start moving down a road of suspecting a disability, but it does happen. Um, so there's kind of lots of variables there. It just depends on what the kid has been exposed to before and what supports we can provide in the classroom. And then how they respond. So it's always about, are they responding to this intervention? Are we seeing progress or gains based on the support given place or not? Uh, but we, you know, we take very, um, you know, diligent notes on, on student progress and we try, we've got lots of, as you can tell, we've got lots of ways of tracking. How they're doing, uh, and then respond.
So DESI requires us to approve this plan. Does, what does DESI do then? Do they review this plan and approve it or do they have some guidelines or something?
I mean, we, we have our guidelines for how we write the plans, so we make sure that we are aligned to the plan. But, but as far as the state is concerned, this is really best practices for us and a, and a tip box for this.
Yes. Yes.
Post is made seconded. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Body upgrade to earn a person. Mr. President, with the words basically through print electric for the body upgrade to earn a career. Center in amount of personally eight dollars and five hundred and eighty seven dollars. Post is made seconded. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Just one little question. So the, the mark twenty eight thousand is out, are we even used by that? Are we twenty five percent or are we paying twenty five? Mr. President. Were we able to propagate any rights through energy from changing over to LED or whoever looking at anything like that? So we can look into that. Yeah. They should give us some money. Or they, they might simply change over to something that's images. So a lot of things that we look at are, they're based on, since we don't pay taxes. A lot of the individuals apply to us by more than half of them. That's true. Offway repair attorney's version. President. I'm going to let the board actually ask trust group for additional concrete metal which is crucial work to earn a risk and found one to balance. Second. Post is made seconded. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Fuel price increase twenty four, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Mr. President, with the words case increase in prices for the twenty four, twenty five scooter by ten cents. The price of over lunch will be two thirty five. And secondary lunch will be two hundred. Post is made seconded.
Yes.
If you weren't happy, if any questions we have about this.
Where it's coming from, where.
So there's an exercise we have to get on, and there's a calculation that we do that comes back from DESI saying where people's land. Uh, they came back saying we need to raise it to the 10 cents. Uh, that's, uh, this comes about every year in July, uh, it comes across. So nothing that the district does, it's just the calculation, we put it in this website, it gives it, kicks it out to us, and tells us where we need to be. Uh, we went ahead and looked, if you don't see that attachment, uh, you'll still look at comparisons, districts, surrounding districts, to see where we landed the price point. So there, I think, we were sent almost to intense around by our insurance.
Mr. President. Does it? Of course, when it back to our free lunch, um, uh, for our kids, whether reduced lunch, so. It's, you know, the increase for them, for the reduced.
Correct, the percentage is reduced.
Oh, correct. Thank you. First read. Based policies. Any approval of consent agenda, and there is no.
All right, Mr. President, I move that the board approves that you have a 2024 incentive in this.
I'll be certain. Great Town Educational Foundation donated $1,809,000 to, uh, for the Sparkle Conference. Thank you. Very much. Thank you, Bobby. Both of that. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Mr. President, I move that the board adjourned right for the board of education meeting at 7:24 p.m.
Certainly. Well, now we got a report. Ms. Bobby.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.